Call the order, the workshop meeting of December ninth, two thousand and twenty, if we could just rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Should be a relatively short one tonight, but we will see. So special prosecutor contract, Mindy, do you want to talk about that?
Okay, so when we left off last time, we had said that we were gonna, I was gonna do a little bit of research. Talked to Cold Spring and talked to Phillips Town, see what was going on, so. Anyway, in doing that, I came to find out that although Cold Spring had did exactly what we did and reacted and went ahead and hired. Phillips Town apparently just ignored the letter from DA Tandy and did nothing. And continued along the way things were going and it went that way. So I thought about it, thought about it, I thought about it, and I drafted an email and I changed the email about four times. But I figured if you don't ask the question, then the answer is always no. And I just, I, I went to, out to DA Tandy and I said. Cold Spring did it like we did it, we used him once, I know that Phillips Town hasn't. Can you help us out and, you know, continue to help us with our workload, which is so vast? And he said, yes, he would help us, so. He, he mentioned that he wished that Phillips Town would take on a prosecutor because they have much more work. But he specifically said, that's another story for another day. But, um, so anyway, the Putnam County District Attorney is gonna take back over our vehicle and traffic misdemeanors. So we do not have to contract with a special prosecutor again.
Good work.
Now, if they would just refund our money from last year, that would be wasted.
Well, I think that the case that's ongoing, we have to continue. Because there's motions like back and forth with the, the attorneys that the guy hired. And our prosecutor, so I think we have to finish this particular case out under the old contract. But one of us is gonna have to break it to him that we're not going forward after that.
I'm more than happy to.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure he'll understand that it's.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, expenditure of money and what we already pay for in taxes, so. Yeah, great job, I, I'm glad that the county is gonna take it over again. And again, it's, you know, something that every citizen here pays for. And for them to ask us to do it in the first place was kind of unusual, but. Glad it worked out the way it did. Updates, remote public meetings, I know Mindy, you have the dates, but, and then Chris, you did a training on this recently.
Yeah, Chris, Chris has the dates, I didn't, I didn't say that.
The, the dates, oh yeah, um, so, well, I'll, I'll start with the beginning, so the governor. Had first enacted the executive order two zero two point one, which authorized public bodies to conduct meetings without having to be. The public be physically present if they do the following. Public is allowed to view or listen to the meeting live, either by video or teleconference. The meeting is recorded and the meeting is then later transcribed. NICOM. Their kind of take on it, it's been extended every thirty days since it was first issued. That's because executive orders have to be renewed every thirty days. And the current one is extended through January first. And NICOM believes that we should assume that this order will continue to be extended through the duration of the pandemic. And we can check their website if we want to just double check each month, they, they've been posting it. For those villages or municipalities that aren't able to be conducting the video like we've been doing. They have allowed them to do it in person. But they have to be socially distanced, limit the number of folks there, make sure that there is, they can accommodate six feet of social distancing. Et cetera, so. We've been doing everything we should. And as far as noticing, we've been giving folks proper notice and links. Everybody knows that it's, it's on video and how to do it, how to get to it, so, so that's all good.
The one issue that we did have that you had brought up was the transcribing and. Come to find out, we were uploading all of our videos of every meeting to YouTube and YouTube automatically closed captions, everything. The only kind of caveat to that, though, is that according to NICOM, if we get a FOIA request for minute, meeting minutes. We may have to go in and edit the transcript to show who's speaking, right?
Right.
So we.
But would this mean that we wouldn't be creating our monthly minutes?
It's an addition, we still have to do the minutes as well.
Okay.
The actual, the minutes that are created by Mindy that are kind of the, the, you know, bullet points of the meeting or for the, the record of the village. The transcribing is kind of for the, it's for people with disabilities if they wanted to have access to the meetings in terms of, you know, they don't have it. They're unable to hear or see or something like that.
Mike, just because we have to do this with our videos at NYU. I think it's a setting, I can check the YouTube videos that we've already posted, but to go back in, I mean, it's super easy, but just to click that you want. Closed captioning to appear.
We're already good. I, I think at the beginning, we set that up. Cause I went in this morning and checked one of them and it actually is pretty, pretty spot on in terms of what we say and.
It's not bad, yeah.
Yeah.
Does transcribe every um and, and. But I, I'm glad that, you know, in terms of NICOM officially, we've been doing everything above board, so. Did they give any, any kind of indication how many villages or towns are unable to do remote meetings?
No.
All right, uh, short term rental, I've, Chris and Dove, but I think, Chris, you had, you know, kind of a bullet point overview.
Yeah, so, um, we, you know, took all of the comments that we heard in, in the survey. And the review that we did of the other four local municipalities who've already have the law on the books. And gave kind of a list of key components that we'd like to see Brian Morgan draft for us. I can go through those, he expects to have a first draft for us by. I think he had said two weeks from when we, we gave it to him and I would put it at like Wednesday of next week, so probably not before. Our meeting on Monday, but he's working on that and then we'll be able to go from there. So kind of some of the general regulations. We asked for, were to prohibit the purchase of property for the sole purchase purpose of turning it into a short term rental. That was pretty resounding feedback that we heard from folks. Hosts can only rent their primary residence, not a vacation or a secondary home. Only the homeowner could be the host, a renter could not list out their rent, their rental. Limit the number of days that the host can rent out a property. For instance, Beacon has said there is that a hundred days in a calendar year. So, you know, some of these things we can fine tune as we go along and we hear feedback from folks from the community. But that's kind of where we set it for now. Host must, host or designee must be on call within thirty minute drive of the rental to address any issues. The code enforcement official will monitor rental units for compliance, insurance and safety. Limit the number of permits allotted in any year. That again, we can, we can. Tinker with, five percent of two seventy would put us at about fourteen permits, which was close to where the number of short term rentals were at the height in two thousand and nineteen prior to COVID. But we can, you know, start small and go bigger or kind of adjust that needed.
My only question with that is, say we have fourteen people that are issued permits. Is there a lottery or something the next time around if there's more than fourteen or are they gonna, is it first come, first served or something like that?
From my review of the other laws, other villages laws, it is first come, first served and there, I did not see any lottery. We could, we could talk about it though and make an adjustment for us.
And how much would, would a permit be?
They range, one, I think kind of the most common was about two fifty for a initial fee. And then one fifty for annual renewal.
So is that yearly?
Yeah. That was most common, but it ranged a bit. From like, you know, a hundred and fifty for the initial, fifty bucks for renewal up to. I think, I think. I don't have it in front of me, but maybe a little bit higher than, than the two fifty and one fifty that.
I mean, my preference. We can talk about this later, but my preference would be to keep it affordable so that people comply. Cause I think that's more important than using it as a monetary generating mechanism.
Yeah, and, and we had reached out to Bill to kind of see, but he didn't give us like, um. We, we needed to cover his cost essentially for reviewing the permit process, um, the permit in the first place.
Right.
And to go out and do the inspection, so. As long as it covers it, but I, I agree, we don't, we're, we're not in it to make a ton of money, we just want to make sure that folks are being safe.
And another part of the regulation was that homeowners have to prove that their insurance companies are aware of the use. So I'm assuming that's probably gonna raise people's insurance rates as well.
Yeah, that was a, a question that I, I kind of posed to our lawyer in drafting it to get more information about that. Cause there wasn't a lot in the other legislation that I saw about the insurance in particular, so I'm interested to see what he says about it.
Most places want insurance to be, to be, cover everybody, you know?
And then the other kind of things were to, for us to include in, in our bill would be some other things that we heard back from folks like. Having off street parking, making sure that the driveways of other properties are open, et cetera. No, you know, big gatherings, no large events or parties. Not exceeding the occupancy of the Board of Health or Fire Safety. For the number of approved bedrooms. So. So that was, you know, the short of it. Basically following our laws.
And I, I think it's, you know, we've talked about it a bunch of times before, it's something that's, we're, we're playing catch up in this issue and. I, I mean, in terms of affordability, Dove, like what, what do you foresee being kind of that middle area where? That I would think that two fifty for an initial permit that covers a fire inspection and all of that. And then what did we say for the, the yearly was a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, and some, some unions had like biannual, but having it the annual might be more beneficial to allow more people to, to come in if folks.
I mean, that's, that's pretty much one, one night of rental income, I would think.
Right, yeah, no, you're right, I think it's important to cover Bill's work and as long as it covered Bill's work. That would, I think, be sufficient, I, I don't know if that's like, how many hours, but, um, for that two fifty, I don't know, in, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, like, I'm, it's on our, our sheet of billing.
Schedule, like, I, I could even imagine like if one fifty covered it for the first year and then a renewal of a hundred. But you're right, I mean, in this area, you get a lot per night. It's just, you know, I don't want it to be out of proportion of our fee schedule with other permits, which are not always so high.
Yeah.
But I, I really, I defer to Bill, really, I guess. But we should, I, I, I do think that compliance is the most important. Part of this.
Yeah, compliance and I, I, I still, I, I think that protecting the homeowners themselves is still a big part of this because it's just an accident waiting to happen and. I mean. If a, if a building or a home were to burn down with rental, you know, short term rental people inside of it, you know, that's. That's not gonna be a very, you know, easy thing to explain to the insurance company.
What I think we need to look into, maybe Bill already knows, but I was under the understanding that. If you host with Airbnb, that as a, a host, you're kind of insured under Airbnb or you pay some money. To tap into their, I don't want to misspeak, but there is some liability that's covered. By Airbnb.
I just don't know how, how often or if it's ever been tested, really.
Yeah.
I would assume that, you know, worldwide where, you know, I have probably hundreds of thousands of rentals that it probably has been tested somewhere, but.
I can look into that and ask Bill and maybe we can ask Brian at the next time we. Speak to him.
Any questions or any other discussion on that? So hopefully we'll have a draft law maybe by next month and see if we can have a, a public hearing at some point in the new year.
I think, which I think, I think though, Mike, that it, that the insurance is a big thing. You know, who's gonna cover them, I don't think Airbnb covers.
I mean, personally, if I were gonna, if I had an addition on my house that I was gonna rent out, that would be my biggest worry is that. My property and sue me, I mean.
You want to be insured that something happens, you know, a lot of insurance companies don't really. You know, you, you have a rental and you're renting half, half your house out and you're, and you're not there. You know, red flag comes up to them, they drop you, you know, something simple like that, you know?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's not far fetched that, since we've been discussing this, that if something did happen that, you know, they'd make a case that we're aware of it and not enforcing our laws.
Yeah.
It's good that we're doing this.
I'm sorry, I found the, the fees from the other munis, Beacon is a permit of two fifty and then reinspection fee of fifty. So that would be lower on the reinspection. Irvington was two fifty for the registration, one fifty for renewal. Montgomery was kind of low, I think it was like, but I don't think it listed all of the fees. It didn't list the registration, but the red, reinspection was like fifty dollars back like two years ago. So, just some other points.
And I'm sure that people will have some very strong ideas and in the public hearing, one way or the other as well, so we can take those into account. Lights in the village park, we kind of touched on earlier offline, Dave, but if you wanted to just give a quick update.
We got the lights, put a Christmas tree lighting, we figured out, Steve Burke sent his guys over and they figured out that the problem was that the, the circuit breaker. For that, there's actually a designated circuit breaker for that, where the flag pole is. And it's on it and, and they found that, that, that's hooked up to a timer as the Christmas tree is on a timer. So it goes on and off without us bothering with it. And then I talked to the guys about the. The, the, the maintenance of the, that we own, they own the poles, the six of them, I figure it's like fifteen dollars a pole, we pay a month. That's why electric bill is kind of high in there because it's separate. And they're supposed to get back to us. They, they contacted Mindy with some, some information, but they haven't sent it to her in regard to signing, signing stuff off on whatever it is. You know, they, they, they're gonna send information on it. And I talked today, like I mentioned to you, about a light pole in front of my house. And they're gonna put, they're gonna, that might be somebody information you're gonna send to sign off on it. Cause it, it, with the way the poles are so spaced out down here and being right on the turn, it's just, it's just blackout from. So, and he said they can put one on there, I think the information is gonna come in regard to that. But they also said on the, the trees, the tree's gotta be pruned in the park. That's why the lights go on during the summer, cause they're so, it's so dark when the trees go and bloom that they cover the, the, they, they said that's probably on some kind of a dimmer. Or a solar thing for the lights to work, you know, they, they kind of explained it, but they're gonna get more information themselves on the poles and then get back to us, so.
Open to swapping out the bulbs in the park to more efficient LED?
Yeah, they were gonna get back to us on that, on what, what to do, if, you know, if they can do it or if we have to do it, they'll, they were gonna send the information to the office. So we know which way to go on that, you know, but it basically, he's kind of like said, the bill is gonna be the same on a sense because they own the poles and we're kind of like renting them. You know, so that's the biggest expenses, I think the pole, renting the poles.
And what's the bill a month there total, like all?
It was like a hundred dollars for the month, right, Mindy?
Yeah, like one, one thirty-five.
For that, just for the park.
Right.
Yeah, so, so it's ninety, two hundred dollars just for the poles and then another thirty to forty dollars for the electricity.
Mike, when you were in Cold Spring, do you remember paying monthly rental fees for the poles? Not for the lighting, not for the Christmas lighting, but just in general for the right of way access fee?
Yeah, there was always a, a cost there. I mean, the municipality was always charged for electricity for the poles and things like that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember if there's a specific breakout per pole. And Cold Spring didn't really have lighting in their parks. I mean, Mayor's Park has a few lights in it, but I, I don't know if that was broken out separately or not. This is just different because when they built that park in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, they met, they must have had Central Hudson run the, you know. Put all of that infrastructure in the park itself. Yeah, I mean, I, I, whether we need all those lights in there or not, I mean, that's another conversation we can have. I don't know if we can ask them to take some of them away, but leave the poles inactive, I'm not sure.
Now, would, that wouldn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, I mean, anything to save some money. I, I think with some brighter, cleaner lighting in there rather than that, you know. I don't even know phosphate, like I call it the crime lighting, the, the orange. It doesn't really, it doesn't cast, it doesn't really light up anything, really, it's just got that orange glow to it and it's always been that way. I think we got some cleaner light in there that.
Yeah.
Was more effective, that you could probably do a lot more with less. So, we'll talk.
Once we get the information, cause Steve Burke talked to the guys, he, he, he set it, set it up and we can get, whatever we gotta go and do, we get Steve to do it. Cause at least he came out and sent his guys out and fixed the stuff, so we know where we're at.
Yeah, Steve is very responsive and he, he does good work, so I'm glad to see that he got them all. Uh, anything else on lighting? Leaf and garden debris pickup, Mindy, if you want to just give a quick update.
Well, of course, we had that storm on Saturday, so that got put off until Monday, but from what I understand. The only person that I heard from today was Roger Blanchard up on Healy and Mark was here actually. So I told him to go up and get Blanchard's bags, but he said that on Monday, they had taken a bunch of stuff from up there too, so. Anyway, I'm, I'm assuming everybody's bags are gone and everything went well as it was supposed to, you know, on Monday when they picked up.
Great.
They're still picking them up, they're across the street from me, there's a big pile of leaves.
All right, well, if you see any, Dave, just like let me know because he's gonna do it this week, but then he's not gonna do it, you know, after this week.
Yeah, but I mean, I watched him, I went down Division Street the other day and they were picking the leaves up at one house. And they drove away and as soon as they drove away, the guy quickly tore his leaves out.
That, well, that's why we do it for a week, that's why we can't do it for a day.
Trail maintenance off the Pearl Street entrance, I, I have some information on it. So Will Nevis from OSI got back to me, I told him exactly what we wanted to do back there, OSI has no issue with it. He put me in touch with one of the trail stewards from New York and Jersey Trail Conference who came and looked at it last week. He said for relatively a low amount of money, we could probably just get some gravel and re-surface it. He's willing to come and oversee a volunteer trail upkeep day or something like that. I told him we could get our trail committee to come out and help. The only cost will be the gravel, so we can look at that for next year. So I don't think it's really worth doing anything this time of year. Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to it in the spring and get it over with. Trying to be, anything else?
Thank you so much, did he, I, did you say that he also said something about signage that?
Yeah, so as part of the discussions with the conservation easement extension back here, which is gonna be completed probably within the week. We had discussed some updating the signage on the kiosks and he is going to mock up a new poster for inside the, the kiosks at both. Wood Avenue and Secor Street. He sent me the vendor information if we wanted to look into getting any more made or any, you know, replacements made. They're expensive, I mean, they're in the ballpark of between two and four thousand dollars a piece, so. I mean, they, they run the whole gamut, I mean, you could do something like they do at Fawn Stock, which is just kind of a standalone like T sign or something like that. But for the full kiosk with the cover on it and all that is about four thousand dollars. So it's in our best interest to take good care of the ones we have. But he's gonna get the mockups of the new trail maps to me with, it's gonna have like a history of the property. And then a little blurb about OSI on there and have, you know, their role in preserving it and, you know, some different things about the, the environment around here in terms of ticks and all that great stuff.
And did OSI say they would pay for the ones at Pearl and Wood?
For the posters, I mean, we're, we're talking probably, it's not a lot to print those, so maybe fifty dollars a piece or something like that, it's, it's not. Dollars, so, I mean, he was, I mean, inclined to have us pay for it. But we'll, we'll look, we could have money in the recreation budget if we had to dip into it for that stuff. And then, you know, I talked to resident Gordon Robertson has a laser cutter and I have one at work as well about doing some signage. His daughter did a mockup for me, just kind of like a Village of Nelsonville, like, you know, dumping sign thing to show like what she could do down there. But maybe in the new year, we could look at doing some kind of design of some kind of new sign for the trailheads or something like that. It's relatively easy, at, at my work, I could print up to, I think it's thirty-two by twenty, so it's a pretty decent sized sign. And then I think we're, I have to talk to Paul Halbach, I think in terms of trail tags, we're probably getting down to the end of the. The supply of those, so it might be time to think about a redesign of those too. Anything else about trails? I ran into Wendy and her husband up on the trail on Sunday afternoon, still out planting in the middle of winter. And, you know, they were kind of telling me about some of the, the issues that happened in the woods and there's not many, but I. You know, trash, everything else is like non-existent there and those trails have been getting more usage now than they ever have, so. I mean, it's a real testament to the, the volunteers around here, but I, I mean, it's, the stuff disappears before anybody can even see it, so it's a great job by everybody.
Yeah, the trails have been really clean.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one thing I want to kind of work on next year maybe is when you commit off of Secor Street and the first right you make. And then you go left towards James Pond, you used to be able to go straight out for the Wood Avenue Trail, but there's that gigantic tree that came across. There's something we can do with that, that'd be awesome. Somebody built a really neat lean to on the back of it and I don't know. Does anybody know who's responsible for those? Because they're all over and, I, I mean, it's a really neat little project, I don't know if it's from the Boy Scouts or what.
I don't know, Paul did talk to me about clearing that trail at some point.
The, the tree is probably a three foot across trunk, I mean, it's, it's huge, that tree, and it came down in one of those big windstorms like two years ago. And it came down in one of those big windstorms like two years ago. Uh, it's that, it's probably a day or two or three in of itself for a full crew, but. Uh. Lighted pedestrian signs, Lisa?
Is that? This was just something that I saw when I was in Maine over Thanksgiving was um. Not pedestrian signs, but they have them, uh, they flash their solar signs and. It it's really easy to see them in the dark. Um, the main turnpike is really dark and. Having almost been taken out a number of times crossing at the pedestrian crosswalk in Nelsonville, I was. Thinking maybe they, there's something existed that um flashed like that and it actually does. I sent you a link to um. Some signs and I I don't know what are, you know, what we can do if we have to go through the Department of Transportation. Or if it's something that we could do if we wanted to, but they're they're like a thousand dollars.
Yeah, anything on Main Street's got to go through DOT, but I mean. Like everyone else's has experienced, it's a dangerous intersection, so if we can do anything to improve it, definitely, let's talk about it. Uh, DOT was kind of receptive to the speed signs that we talked about, but the Sheriff's Department didn't really care for them. Because they felt like they were a waste of money, but. So if you want to look into it further, uh, Mindy's got the contact for DOT and maybe you can call them and run it by them.
Sure, happy to do that.
I think that's great, Lisa, especially at night.
Yeah, if we can get something that's on the pole or on the the side of the road, I I remember uh. Danielle McCarthy, when she was on the board, had the uh pedestrian sign kind of in the middle of the road. And that turned out to be a violation of some DOT standards, so we can't do that anymore. But uh, yeah, if we could have something that's more visible, that'd be great. S- uh, sexual harassment videos, uh, New York State Law, Lisa, that's you as well.
Yeah, this just came up in my office every year. At the end of the year, we have to do a sexual harassment training. It's New York State Law and. Um, it's really just a couple of videos and a conversation, so since Mindy is our employee, I pass them on to her. Um, and then, you know, she emailed me that she will watch them and then if there's any questions, we can discuss. Many issues.
Thank you for keeping uh that, you know, keeping on top of that and and getting it done before the end of the year. Uh, yeah, they're not 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 fun to watch, but definitely important. I think that's everything that we have on the agenda. Does anybody else have anything?
We got new signs for the.
Yeah, for the winter park and I was holding it up before. Okay, so. Can everybody see them?
No.
Great.
Wait, let me get it, wait.
I can't see it. There's no picture. I have no picture of that.
No?
No, I had to, no. You're not, I don't see you at all, Mindy.
I can see her. You have to, you may, you might have to scroll down on your Zoom, Dave.
That 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 that's a lot of luck.
Use the down arrow.
Stop in tomorrow and see.
I see the sign, I see the signs. I picked them up this morning. But did Mark put the arrows on them, Mindy?
No, he's gonna, I told him not to do anything, he's gonna meet with you, so you can tell him where to put them and where to put the arrows.
Okay.
So other, so he doesn't have to do it and then do it again when you want it somewhere else.
All right, if I get a hold of tomorrow.
I I did have one question from a resident of Seacor about the no parking signs along the woods back there. I, they asked whether it was just no parking, kind of where the signs are, is it the whole road? And I told them it was the whole road.
Yep.
Um. We're still working on the the issues at Sea or at Spring Street and Main Street. Uh, waiting to hear back from DOT about painting some kind of no parking lines or something like that. Blue Broncos still remains parked out there, International, whatever that truck is. Yeah, it's literally snowing and it's a convertible truck, so.
Well, we also have the thing with that trailer on Matter Street.
Yeah, he needs to move that before the first snowfall because he's going to be in violation of the snow ordinance.
Yeah, that's the only thing. I mean, we technically can't tell, we can't leave it there right now.
Yeah.
Because it has a plate, but we do get snow and then he has to, then I'm sure Mark's not going to want to bury it, which is probably end up doing.
Can uh, Mindy, you tell Bill tomorrow that that needs to be kind of priority?
Yes.
Yeah, just a warning that they need a plan to move it before snow.
Yeah.
They're not in violation, obviously, but they need.
Yeah, do you want, do you want the signs on Spring Street, the no parking signs there? Did that what we came up with last week to put them there on the one side where the cars aren't piled up?
Along the sidewalk or the other side of the street?
The side against the building.
I mean, that's, we had discussed this a couple of times.
Yeah, we we really haven't came to a a decisive. Yeah, let's put them here, because you got the liquor store guy there and you got the people from the couple of stores parked their cars there during the day.
In in all honesty, if he would stop parking on this front skirt of the building and, you know. Blocking the intersection of view either way, I I don't see an issue with the parking there. I I I don't know, I I can go either way with it.
Yeah, I I really want to put us, put a sign up and then have everybody who kind of like the few people that work there. Because there is no place really to park your car down there, who parked their cars there.
Yeah.
Well, it's an inconvenience. The biggest thing is, like the guy right now at the Bronco, he's on the right side of his cut. Cut space for this footy, for the cor- corner. So if if there was a line there, he'd be at the line right now, because he's not, he's back, he's back far enough off the curb in a sense. But we've, like you said, if we can get DOT to put lines out there. Paint, yeah, paint lines out, paint them the the yellow lines or the white lines so you can't park on the street. They didn't know enough.
Yeah, I I think if we did, if we painted the lines and took the parking away on the side, I I think that would be much. Uh, I'll definitely gladly trade off a, you know, no parking lines on Main Street and leave the parking there.
Could we, could we do like kind of a compromise where there's just like one parking spot right at the corner lip? Where we say no parking here to corner, just to allow for visibility and then we can allow like a couple of other spots to. To exist um for people who have businesses in our parking there. Because that that visibility around that corner is just hard with a car parked right. There.
He's back, technically, he's back. If you go down to, if you go down to Cold Spring, he's about with the Cold Spring cars, where they have, where they have the white lines for the fifteen-minute parking. You know, it's just that it it being a scout and high up and most cars nowadays are real low. And you can't see over the car to get out. That's the, that's the hardest part, because his, if he'd move his thing and bring it home. Then you'd you'd have, because all the other people who park, they have lower cars, not high, high vehicles.
Yeah, but I mean, there's also, that's a much higher speed area than they have on Main Street in Cold Spring. And it's kind of applying curve coming up and over past Peaceville Road.
Yeah.
Can I, can I ask, what is the rule about having your car in the street and never moving it? Because there's a couple on Spring right there that just never move. There's a Volvo. This blue Bronco thing that we're talking about never moves except back and forth.
As long as they're legal, there's no law about it.
Uh, there's no, no parking time limit, really, uh, other than if it snows, you need to get off the street. And I mean, I think those cars, there's a Volvo. Uh. Like a Honda, there's a couple of cars that park there, but they, I do see those move. That blue truck has not moved since the night of the fire. And it's like.
No, it hasn't. It hasn't moved at all. He's lucky he's still standing, that 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 car after that fire.
Yeah, I mean, and I I don't know if it actually starts any longer, that's the thing. So, yeah.
They have tow trucks.
You go push it.
I think that's what they did, because the night of the fire was parked on the sidewalk and we told them as part of the. Re- reissuing of their CO that that, you know, they need to leave that part part of the property open as a fire lane from now on. So I think they just pushed it out of the street. But, I mean, that's.
Parking on the sidewalk ever allowed?
No.
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 Where he parked up, where he parked on a sidewalk, he was parking on his part of the sidewalk that was technically his driveway.
Yeah.
You know, because four feet of the, four feet of that slab, the the curb in, that's the sidewalk. And then the rest of it is his part of the driveway itself.
Oh.
So if he parks up against his building where it wasn't either fire, he's not blocking a sidewalk or nothing, but he's on his own piece. But you can't see getting out, getting getting by at all with that truck on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right.
And I mean, it, again, this building was used as a uh. You know, horseshoeing shop and uh, you know, an iron crafter. And, you know, he had a big, large work truck that he would pull up there to conduct business, but, I mean, this is a wine store. I don't see. I, all their deliveries are going through the side entrance in the back, so I don't think they would park on their sidewalk anymore. Uh, anything else before we adjourn for the evening? I can't think of anything off the top of my head. Uh, Christmas lighting, you know, we we lit the Christmas tree. We, Mindy did a great job putting the lights up at Village Hall, thank you. Uh, but we're not going to have a traditional tree lighting this year, just given everything that's going on and, you know, the risk associated with it, so. Uh, enjoy the holidays. And I don't know, hopefully everyone will be vaccinated by April, May, June, and we can have a nice big block party next year to celebrate. Uh, coming out the other side of COVID. So, hopefully.
Tomorrow night is uh the first night of Hanukkah, so I will add the menorah out there. I didn't put it out.
And we'll, I'll put a post up on Facebook eventually, you know, just explaining everything and why we did what we did. Anything else? Uh, public comment, Gloria, you've been out there the whole time. Do you have any questions or anything to say?
No, nothing really to say. Just a lot of work for a workshop. It's good to see that much getting done. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if that's all, I'll, you know, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor, I.
Good night, doll.
Enjoy your evening.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Night.
Night.